Taya for the rest of the agenda.
There you go.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate our opportunity to be face-to-face virtually and so glad for our continued work together. I just want to share a couple of disclaimers because of our virtual environment. I am home with two dogs and I have given them sufficient bones. Keep them busy, but I'm not so sure that they will keep them quiet. So I forgive, please ask your apologies ahead of time. In the event that they start barking out of control, so I'll do my very best. I'm also working with multiple screens. So if I'm looking away from the camera, it's because I'm referencing some documents that I have online. So I wanted to provide the board and the public an update on our work in response to the COVID-19 crisis that we find ourselves. We have been at this a few weeks and I first want to start with thanking the incredible staff that we have who have been working tirelessly to continue providing services to our students. Particularly, I want to call out the work of our food service staff who have been providing meals to our families for seven days of meals, breakfast and lunch. I believe last year, we, last week, pardon me, we provided a little over 8,000 meals to our families and that number just continues to grow. So to me, that indicates that the need continues to grow. So I want to especially thank Eileen Faustic and the Food Service Department. Many of you know, but maybe not all, that our custodians are still working. They are in our buildings, continuing the deep clean of our buildings in preparation for the day that our students and staff return. Just want to give a special thank you to our custodian, the maintenance staff who are working in our buildings. The teachers and administrators that have been working on getting us digitally online for students. Want to give a special word of gratitude to them and the numerous other staff members that are supporting us. All too many to name, but please know that everyone is pitching in and making a difference for the benefit of students and staff. This week starts the first week of Phase Three learning. While when we dismissed schools physically from our buildings on March 13th, we did not know how long we were going to be out. So the Milford approach to providing distance learning was to roll it out in phases. Depending on the length of time we're going to be out and the great need that we would have. So we are entering Phase Three, which does not mean more work for students and staff, but just a continued variety of platforms for students to engage with teachers. So we anticipate more interactive engagement between teacher and student and student and student. So the key phrase for Phase Three is structure with lots of flexibility. We know that our staff and families are going through many, many changes and challenges at home. So we did not move to a black and white schedule. It's not as simple as putting a bell schedule on a virtual learning platform. But rather, we establish some structure for families to know that they can count on the delivery and access to teach instruction, but has built in some flexibility for families to access it during times that are best for the family, depending on what's happening at home with work. We realized that while the governor has extended our closure of school buildings through May 20th, we are planning for the worst-case scenario in that we won't be able to return to school this, to a school building this school year. But we're of course hopeful that we can on May 20th. But with that said, we are just this week engaging in laying out the rest of the school year in the event that we won't be able to return to our, our buildings. So our administrators are working on how to potentially continue some end-of-year activities. We will lay those activities out and they will land in one of three categories. One, plan to do the activity in a virtual different type of way. Two, postpone the activity. Or three, cancel the activity altogether. So some of that work is taking place at each level, elementary, middle and high school. And as we make decisions, we will start to roll those out to our students and staff and families. And of course, we will engage students, staff and families as appropriate around some of those activities. So that is the state of affairs as of today. I will have to extend one more word of gratitude and that is to our families for being extremely flexible as we have been trying to figure this all out. And the phrase "we're in this together" couldn't be more true in Milford. We've had great partnership with our mayor and town offices, particularly Department of Public Health. And there are decisions that... Okay, another bone took care of that. Pardon me. So I was saying that it, we are in the midst of making decisions, multiple decisions every day. And there are questions that we don't have answers to yet. And that has been really indicative of this entire process. And so I need to, I would really like to thank our families for being so patient with us and understanding that we are all doing our very best to meet the needs of our students and staff. So there are more decisions to make as we move forward to take us through May 20th and/or the end of the school year. So that's our work this year, this week, in particular with the focus on phasing into Phase Three, starting this Wednesday with elementary and Thursday with secondary.
Thank you, board members. Do you have any questions? Use your raise hand feature if you do. In case seeing none, we can move on to the next agenda item. Dr. Koutaya.
So the next agenda item is high school graduation dates for 2020. We just want to bring up document that I have. Okay, so let me just start off by saying that there isn't a single staff member, administrator on our team that, whose heart is not breaking right now for our senior class. I think that is a nationwide feeling that we really are empathizing and understanding the challenge of the senior year not being exactly the way we all dreamed it would be for our, this class of 2020. So we are going to do our very best to make this as special as possible with a lot of unknowns that are before us. And that's why this evening, the graduation date is not an action item for Board of Ed members. Rather, just an informational piece to share with board members and for discussion. So while we potentially will be returning to school on May 20th, we're just not sure what executive orders will still be in place or changed that would impact the ability to bring large numbers of people together around a regular typical graduation ceremony. So as you know, there are hundreds of people that gather on, on a good day, a good weather day outside on our fields to celebrate the accomplishment of graduation for our seniors. And then a bad weather day inside a gymnasium or an auditorium. But without knowing what the governor's executive orders will be come June, we cannot make the decision that we would have a regular typical graduation ceremony. I would make a recommendation to the board to consider dates in June that likely would be June 10 and 11 if we were able to move forward with a regular ceremony. But it's premature for me to propose that to you, for us to promise the public that we would have a ceremony on those dates. A couple of other options that we are considering as the rest of the nation is in places that are impacted by not being able to have a graduation ceremony as normal is having a virtual celebration of sorts sometime this spring. And certainly the postponement of graduation until the governor allows for the gathering of the number of people we would be bringing together. The postponement potentially would be a summer and if we had to fall ceremony. But again, it all has to do with when we would be able to gather together in large numbers again. And we would do that in consultation with the Department of Public Health and through guidance of the Governor's Office and the Commissioner of Education's Office. So this is not a Milford standalone decision. It will be made with lots of guidance and most certainly with the approval of this board. So that's why we really don't have an action to vote on this evening.
Are there questions from board members on graduation? Okay, I have one, Dr. Koutaya. I just want to confirm that the, the graduation that we're, you're just talking about differs from the awarding of a diploma. So even if we don't have a graduation on a ceremony on the 10th or the 11th, students will still be getting their diplomas in, in some fashion, correct?
Correct. So graduation can have a couple of meetings here and primarily the Board of Education votes on the dates of the ceremony of graduation, not the whether students have met graduation requirements. Those are laid out in policy, which is approved by the board, but those are confirmed by our high school offices. And then diplomas are confirmed by me as given the authority by state statute. So that does not mean students aren't graduating by fulfilling graduation requirements. It's just the decision of a ceremony that celebrates the graduation.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Were there any other questions from board members? Ms. Wolf Boynton, let's see. Yes, Ms. Wolf Boynton.
I'm just curious, has the state, has the Department of Education or the Governor's Office given any kind of hint or timeline when they might be, when they might be rendering a decision whether any kind of public ceremonies will be possible?
No, they have not given us any indication of a timeline. They, they just haven't given us an indication. I think they too, like we, are prioritizing the questions to which we are trying to get answers and make decisions around. And I think the biggest one that we were all waiting on, which came out last week, was whether we would be returning to school on April 20th. And that got delayed, of course, till May 20th. So I think as we move into the beginning of May, they'll have to make first the difficult decision on whether we come back at all. I think that's at the front of their minds. And then I believe my gut tells me that these decisions about how many people can gather and in particular about a graduation ceremony will be made late. So we'll just make the best decision at the time we get information. And again, we'll just ask everyone to be patient. If June doesn't look like our gathering time, we'll likely find a way to celebrate along the way through June or some have, so have something virtually. But you know, we'd really like to have a ceremony for our seniors. We, that is young people walking across the stage, grabbing the piece of paper or the covering to the diploma and throwing their caps up in the air is the dream. And we want to make that happen. We're just not sure when or how that will look.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you. So because of our stay-at-home, stay-safe-stay-at-home executive order, the polls are not going to be open for the primary on April 28th. That has been moved to June 2nd. So we'd like for the board to consider keeping school open on April 28th and closing school June 2nd. Now, the asterisk that goes along with this is if we are not returning to physical school building this year, there's a potential that we could go to school virtually on June 2nd and therefore not requiring that we're off. But it's too early to make that decision. So there's a potential that I'll be coming back to this board to discuss calendar again. There's also other ways maybe that we could be using June 2nd, but I'm still in conversation with our administrative staff about that because we do have some end-of-year items to take care of that would normally be taken care of face-to-face and given time to do that. And if we're allowed back in our buildings to any degree, well, we sort of left our buildings like any typical Friday. We did not leave our buildings like we're closing out for the summer. So that is one of the items on the list on how to take care of. So I, while I cannot speak to whether June 2nd will be a day of schooling, either in a physical building or not, at this time, I would prefer that we hold virtual schooling on April 28th because the primary will no longer be in place and we're virtually schooling and move that date to June 2nd for now, understanding that we may be talking about calendar again.
Okay, very good. Any questions on the calendar?
Hi, this is Una Petrowski and I'd like to move that the Milford Board of Education approves the administration's request to revise the 2019-20 calendar to reflect the change in the presidential primary date from April 28th to June 2nd, 2020.
Mr. Fowler?
Fowler seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. So is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, um, we'll do a roll call vote. I'm going to unmute people. Ms., Ms., Ms. Griffin? Roll called vote.
Okay. Adam D. Young?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Rita Hennessy?
Yes.
Warren Palowski?
Yes.
Una Petrowski?
Yes.
Betsy Ratner? Cynthia Twiss?
Yes.
Nicole Watson?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
Susan Glennon?
Yes. So motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I invite Ms. Kapazna to provide a HR report.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. So this month, you have the listing of our job postings as well as all the personnel changes for the month. The personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations and stipend appointments. And I would just like to point out that on the job postings, you'll notice a large number of department chairpersons, department liaison, team leader positions. And just so you know, we post these every year. We typically do it in May, but since we had some time on our hands, we thought we'd get those posted a little bit early this year. So, and we'll continue to post all of our annual stipends that we do, do so at the end of the school year for the following school year. And as well, I'd like to point out that we have 14 retirements, teacher retirements in the queue for 6:30, 2020.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Kapazna? Mr. D Young?
Hi, thank you. I just was curious if you could walk us through a little bit what the hiring process is at this point. And I assume most of it is done virtually, but, or all of it is done virtually. But when you get to the later stages of the hiring process, what that, what that currently looks like?
Okay, thanks. So good timing on this question because we do have a process tomorrow for a position where we've done the round one interviews in a virtual setting on Google Hangouts with a committee of people, just like we do in person. And we're doing the second round the same way where we're gathering teachers on one Google Hangout, administrators on another, and actually parents on a third one. So we're going through that process. This is for an administrator position. But for teacher positions, we will try to mimic what we do in real life, just in a virtual capacity as much as possible. So.
Will you, I'm sorry. So will you have to potentially hire people without having brought them in, in person? Or will you not do that?
Well, actually, we haven't gotten to the teaching positions yet because we won't post for those or begin looking for those positions until after the budget is passed at the end of, end of May.
Sure.
So we do need to replicate a demo lesson, if you will, of a teacher actually teaching students. So we do have to kind of iron out that, that kink and those details on how we're going to accomplish that and not, you know, still give credence to the process and do everything that we do normally.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from board members on the personnel report? I did, I had a couple of questions. I was curious, there's on the job postings, Ms. Kapazna. There is a grade five elementary teacher at Orange Ave. So is that, how, is that still open? How is that being handled if there's no teacher in place?
Yeah, that's a good question. So this was a holdout that was posted prior to us leaving the buildings. We had a teacher that was transferring over to an open math coach position, which was open as a result of somebody transferring to a teacher leader position. So that teacher is actually still in the classroom, in the virtual classroom and has not made that transition because she hadn't at the time of us leaving. So we're going to leave her in the classroom for now. And I did leave that posted for now and we're going to decide how to handle that as far as filling it, but it likely will be for next year, not this year.
Okay, good. So there's, there's not a class that was left with a substitute?
No.
During this situation? Okay. Very good. And then there's a few other postings on here that I'm assuming that like substitute nurses, paraprofessional subs, a lot of substitute school psychologists, are that these things that we really be looking for for next year?
Yes.
So we're not truly, you're not truly looking for them for this, come the rest of this year, correct?
Correct. They must have been when we closed it and there just haven't, we just haven't removed them yet.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the financials. Dr. Koutaya?
Thank you. I invite Mr. Vitale to walk us through the quarterly report.
Wait a minute, I got to unmute you, Jim. There you go. No. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Koutaya and Mrs. Glenn and members of the board. It's, this is an interesting one, for sure. Hold on one second. Something popping up on my screen. Okay. So, so this is, this is an interesting quarterly report. You know, as, as I say to you each time I present the quarterly report, we're always looking at the budget. It's not just, we don't look at the budget every quarter. We look at it virtually every day. And since the COVID-19 endemic, a lot, obviously, a lot of things have changed. And so quarterly report, it makes a lot of assumptions and I'll go through them with you because we don't know. There's, there are so many unknowns right now. Things change constantly, as you know. The executive orders that have come out have really affected the budget. So why don't I just go through and highlight a few of the, a few, a few of the accounts that I just would like you to be aware of, how COVID affects it or any of the areas that we believe that we need to watch. So the biggest, of course, is account 111 certified teachers at $46 million. So keep an eye on that one. And, and we think we're doing just fine there. We're showing a, a small surplus that we expect by the end of the year, but that's actually much closer than it has been in years past. So we're doing fine there. Going down to account 1114, summer school salaries. This is one of the ones where we are assuming that we're going to have a regular summer school. We truly don't know whether there's going to be summer school, whether it'll be a different summer school. And so we've incurred all of the dollars that we, that we normally would for summer school. That's an assumption and that could change. Account 1117, teacher substitutes, that's definitely been affected by COVID-19. Obviously, at this point, we don't, we don't need substitutes. We're not using substitutes. And so there's going to be savings in that account. Moving down to 1123, hourly aides. I want to, this is, this is one where, as you can see, we're showing a deficit of $116,000. And the reason for that is with the Governor's Executive Order 7R, which basically said that you need to pay all of your employees, them and, and continue their health insurance. And that's what we're doing as, as are all school districts throughout the state. But there's one group of assistant teachers in the Ready to Learn program. As you know, the Ready to Learn program is funded both by state grant and by tuition from parents who pay on a sliding scale to have their children attend the Ready to Learn. Obviously, since school's not in session, we are not collecting that tuition. But we still have the obligation under the law to, to pay those assistant teachers. And so without the income, that is an account that we will have to fund through general funds. And so we will have a deficit in that account that the general funds will have to cover. As, as we get down, you'll see that there, there will be money, there will be sufficient money to be able to cover that. But I need you to be aware of that, that that's, that hourly aid account is going to be in the hole and that's the reason why. Moving down to 1127, overtime salaries, we will have a surplus in that account since, number one, we, we had a mild winter, so we really didn't use a lot of custody for snow removal. That was a savings. And now with, with the COVID-19, there's nobody that's on overtime or very, very rare that somebody would be on overtime. So we will have savings there. In 1130, retirements certified, we, we are projecting, as Wendy said, we have 14 retirees at this point and two administrators that will be retiring. We believe that by the, that by the end of the year, we will probably pick up a few more and we'll be right around our average. So we look like in that account, we will, we, we should be okay. But that could change if we get, you know, a few more teachers than we expect or another administrator. That could, that, that, we could watch that. We will continue to watch that one. We are running in account 2006, Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are running a deficit and we project that by the end of the year, we will have a deficit in that account. I spoke to you at budget time about the high cost of health insurance and this is a continued reflection of that. It's, this number is based upon the number of people that are on our rolls, our retirees. And hopefully, they're living longer and we have more people on. And in addition, the, the cost of health insurance just continues to rise and quite dramatically. So we will have a deficit there, which we will be able to cover. Moving down to accounts 3231 through 3238, those are all special education. Those are accounts that professional services and psychotherapy services and things like that. Those are accounts that professional services and psychotherapy services and things like that. This is kind of an assumption, too. The 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 accounts are where they are right now. As you know, they're, special education is unpredictable. But we also don't know if. There could be any compensatory services that will come as a result of the COVID-19. So those, those accounts are in fine shape where they are right now. But we are watching them because it may be. A liability that we have to cover at a later date. Just want to bring your, your attention to that. Account 3306, contracted services. There will be a surplus in that account. That's because, mainly because we had no snow this year, and that's what we pay our contractors, our outside contractors that we use. So that's mainly the reason for the surplus in that account. The 414101, our utility accounts are doing quite well. Electricity, this is another one that's directly affected by the COVID-19. Since our schools are closed and they're not, we, we are not operating at night. Number one, all the computers are off, the copy machines are off, the printers are off, and we don't have a second shift for custodians, we don't have any activities taking place at night. So we're saving electricity. Same thing with heat and energy, we we lucked out again this year with the mild winter. This is two years in a row. So I don't know about next year. We'll, we'll keep. And those two accounts were, were doing quite well. In, in all of the buildings and grounds accounts, 4200 through 4305. That we're right where we would be at this time of year. Most of the projects that the maintenance, facilities and maintenance departments do are encumbered at the end of the year, after we go out to bid, things like that. And these will be summer projects, and we are planning a full summer of projects and and maintenance and construction at the schools. So those, those accounts. Those accounts will be spent. Transportation. This is one that, again, COVID-19, I know I keep saying it, but. The governor's executive order 7R basically said that we need to pay at least for a baseline of the bus contractors' salaries and health insurance. And then it leaves, the, the, the law leaves open other services or or other things that we, that we may pay for with our transportation providers and our special education contractors. And the executive order spells those two things out specifically. And the. The intent of the executive order is that when school, when we come back, that our contractors will be ready on day one. And the, the law recognizes that without the support of the money that the, these contractors were counting on, some of them may not be able to make it, or may not be able to provide services on day one. So, so the, the goal of the executive order was continuity of services. And so we're currently in negotiations with our transportation providers, both our regular education provider Durham and our special education providers, as well as we're starting to talk to the. The schools that provide out of district special education services. So we've made certain assumptions here. There will be savings because I don't anticipate that we will pay dollar for dollar, at least for the transportation. We're not sure about the special education contractors yet. But there will be some savings recognized in the transportation accounts. Account 5107, fuel for buses. This one, the prices, the price of gasoline and diesel, as you know, are greatly falling right now. But we are locked in, in a price with the city that was, was went out to bid last year. And we are, when, when the city goes out to bid, we commit to a certain amount of gallonage. And because our buses are not running, we're not buying that fuel, and the, the, the fuel provider, this is one where we're, we're going back and forth, negotiating with the, the fuel provider. They want us to buy all the fuel at the cost and have it on reserve for us. But we're, that's, that's still fluid. So more, 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 more to come on the fuel for the buses. Let's see. Account 565601, as, as I've said to you each time, those, we expect those to be in deficit. But we do believe that they will be covered by the state's excess cost grant. And the executive order. States specifically that all state commitments will be honored. And in conversations and in meetings with the State Department of Education, they have indicated to us that the excess cost grant will, we will have the excess cost grant. So those will be covered. I think, I think that's it. There, there's in the six and seven thousands. When, when COVID-19 hit, we put the brakes on. We didn't know what to expect, and so we, we kind of froze things. We, we told building administrators and instructional supervisors to, to hold up on purchasing anything. And so over the next week or so, we'll be meeting with all of the building administrators, meeting. Virtually, of course. But we'll be meeting with all of them to determine exactly what we will need to get us through the end of this year, anticipating what we might need over the summer, and maybe into next year. Who knows what, what this will bring? But anyway, I think at this point, I will stop and I will be, oh, one, just one more thing. Food service, Dr. Katia mentioned the food service, and they have done a tremendous job cranking those meals out. And. We believe that there will be sufficient reimbursement from the federal government and from the state government. But I just want you to be aware that there's the potential that general funds may have to pick up some of the cost of providing these meals and not having the income from those who pay for their lunches. So it's, it's still fluid. Right now, we're just, you know, the, the important thing for us is to get the meals out. Families need them, and that's what we're doing. But just want you to be aware that at some point in the future, we may be coming to and saying that we, we, we may need some general funds to, to close any gap that we have in food service potential. So that's it, I'll stop now, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from board members? Ms. Petrowski? Wait a minute. There you go.
Hi, Mr. Richatelli, I just had a quick question. Aside from the food services, were there any other extra expenditures that we needed to make in order to. Remote? To implement all of the road for COVID-19?
We, up to this point, we have not spent. We, we had enough devices throughout the system. Our, and a shout out to the IT department, they, they were absolutely wonderful. And they took virtually every device that was in the schools stripped and clean. So we didn't have to buy any technology to, to provide students, to get them going. But we do anticipate that we will need replacement. We, we will take, or if we haven't already, we will be placing, you know, order for some additional Chromebooks and some laptops as replacements for the massive amount of devices that have gone out to students in the last month.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from board members? I wanted to ask, I had a couple. Jim, under. 3304, architectural and engineering services, there's a $37,000 deficit there, can you speak to that?
I can, yes. That, we've used architectural and engineering services for things like the. The flexible furniture, what that was going to look like. We use them for the John Learning Commons, the foreign high school, the plan of the foreign high school learning commons. And so all of those. Have a considerable amount of money over and above what we have budgeted.
Okay. Um. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Richatelli? Mister? Mister DeYoung?
Thank you. Mister Richatelli, I fully recognize that there are so many uncertainties that you probably are making your head spin. But I wanted to ask you about the summer school line item. Is there any anticipation, I don't know if this is for you or for Dr. Katia, but is there any anticipation that the, if summer school were to occur, that there would be potentially higher enrollment because of COVID-19? And some of the, you know, the. Not services, you know, some services that may not have been able to have been provided virtually?
Sure, I, I, I will defer to Dr. Dr. Katia and Fedigan on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Richatelli. I would place a bet on the answer of yes, Mr. DeYoung. We don't know, while we could. Start taking a very educated guess on the preparedness of our young people for the first day of school for next year will be very different. And so one of the items that we are discussing is if and when we can start to gather together in the same building, do we want to do that gathering earlier, sooner than our scheduled first day of school? And that would mean summer school.
Okay.
And when it comes to summer school experiences, I think we're going to have to look at the, the larger population of young people, not just those who hold an IEP. Because I think we're about to move into a new definition of compensatory services when it comes to looking at what all children need. That is probably a conversation for another day, though, because that has huge budget implications.
Sure.
And something that we probably need to discuss, but again, just too early to tell. So we may want to provide that, but there may still be an executive order preventing us from gathering together in larger numbers. So it all depends of when can we get young people under the same roof with our teachers to start kind of closing this gap that has been created since March 13th?
Okay, yeah, I, I figured it was too early to tell, but I just wanted to see what your thinking was on it. I, Doug, Mr. Richatelli, just one other question for you. The buildings and grounds projects, are there none being done now, or just minor things? What, what's being done currently?
Minor things. We, we want to keep our schools, we, we want to keep the, the number of people that are in our schools to a minimum. So we are doing some things, but kind of minimal at this point. Mr. Bradbury did contract with the, the paving company that we use. And normally, that work would be done over the summer. But we look, it looks like there could be a wind of, window of opportunity in April. So. We'll, we'll, that could be done now, some paving outside school. But we're trying to leave the insides of the schools clean and sanitized like they are now.
All right, thank you.
Um, Dr. Katia, I would imagine that. That. The, these are discussions in terms of summer and, and what other students might need. Our conversations that other superintendents are having as well. This has got to be something that's concerning amongst all of your colleagues.
Absolutely, yeah, everyone's facing this. You could start thinking about. I, I will call them quote unquote prerequisite skills that prepare our students for entering into the next grade or course. That's heavy on our minds right now. You know, by the time kids come back to school, they would have been, come back to physical school, pardon me, physical school buildings, they would have been out of a physical school building for 20 plus weeks. Now educators and parents alike, we know what summer slide looks like when they're out for 10. So imagine what it looks like when you're doubling that amount of time outside of a direct instruction by a certified educator. So we're a bit worried on, you take your typical first grader, who we hope reaches a certain level of reading by the time they leave in June, so that they could be ready to pick up in the curriculum where we hope they will be in September. Well, that has to be all completely revisited. Same would be applicable to a high schooler who is finishing a prerequisite course of Algebra I or the sciences, you know, name any of those courses that are, there's that stair step. So if we have an opportunity to, to at least mitigate that gap that's being created, we'd like that. But there's so many unknowns. So as soon as we could swing the doors open of a school building, I'd like for us to do that. But that may be at a very unscheduled time and outside of our budget. And that is something that we as a Board of Education and a leadership team need to keep in mind that we, we predicted a certain amount of resources that we needed for next year, pre-COVID-19. COVID-19 could be changing that story a bit for us. So I think summer needs to be a let's wait and see, and that's not just a Milford issue.
And are these worries that are being expressed, I, I hope they are, but I'll ask the question anyway, being expressed to Commissioner Cardona and the governor when you're on those calls with them?
So, um, to some degree, I'll have to be honest, like I was saying in my update, there is, there's a priority list of items. So, you know, as of Thursday, it was when are we coming back? We still have grading and attendance, and when do we close quarter three and open quarter four? And so there are these like immediate items that we need. There are still some communities struggling to find devices to administer to their young people. So to some degree, Ms. Glennon, but not extensively, because we're, we're still dealing like with the here and now.
Okay, all right. Ms. Wolf-Poynton?
So I have two questions. One is, I'm curious, I know we, you know, the district has done a fabulous job providing Chromebooks to all of the students. I'm just curious, do we provide them to teachers and other staff members as well, so they can work at home?
Right, so those who have responsibilities to support and serve students have devices. So are all of our certified teachers and administrators. We gave Chromebooks to paraprofessionals because they are actually, we're taking advantage of this opportunity to train them all in a behavior-based program. So all paraprofessionals have a Chromebook and are engaging in that learning. So if we are requiring staff members to work from home to provide a service to our school system, then we provide them with the appropriate device.
That's fabulous. And my other question, it's a little different. You know, we, we talked in recent board meetings about the importance of schools having someone on site who is able to identify students that are having issues that might interfere with their learning, right? We talked specifically about the program that set up at Pumpkin Delight. I'm just wondering, I mean, I know that everything is crazy going on right now, but even in this remote atmosphere, is there an opportunity to kind of stay on top? but even in this remote atmosphere, is there an opportunity to kind of stay on top and connect with families in a way to know if they have, you know, not just food issues? I know that we're doing a wonderful job providing food, but if there are other issues at home that they might need support services for, do we have the means to check in on them?
We do. And I'll ask Dr. Fedigan and jump in a little bit because I know she's been more closely working with our instructional supervisors for student wellness and our school counselors. But so part of this whole onboarding to a virtual environment has been to create new protocols and systems. So we've even had to revisit the expectations to call DCF. And what does that look like in the event that we suspect neglect or abuse? We've had to deal with a couple of 211 phone calls already. But those systems and protocols are different because we don't, we're not putting eyeballs on kids. So we are creating those systems. Dr. Fedigan, do you want to chime in with some of the work you are more recently doing?
Sure, thank you. So, um, of course, at each of the levels, elementary, middle and high, we have different staffing models. So depending upon the grade level of students, we are employing the different staffing models. For example, at the elementary level, beyond the building principal and classroom teachers, we have related service faculty, psychologists, social workers and teacher leaders. And so we're trying to build a program that would replicate much of what happens during the school day. So for example, classroom teachers and the support staff that was just mentioned at the elementary level will continue to hold morning meetings to provide that kind of routine and predictable schedule for students and families. So that kind of would be like a core tier one approach to ensure that connectedness that I think you're talking about, Mrs. Wolf Boynton. And then beyond that, at the middle school level, in addition, we then, in high school level secondary, we have the school counselors, which are playing a significant role. So as Dr. Katia mentioned, we have a core program that allows for connectivity to students and staff and in families and staff. And beyond that, we've also developed a crisis response intervention process that allows for counselors to connect with students who may be, or families who may be in crisis. And we've been able to do that in a way that protects student confidentiality, but also position staff to really be able to respond immediately. For example, we've thought of even details like how to advise staff how to split their screen so that when they're connecting with a staff member, a staff member, I'm sorry, connecting with a student or a family member who may be in crisis, so that they can split their screen and stay connected to that student or family member in crisis and be able to access an agency or another administrator or supervisor to provide support in real time so that we're never losing that connection with the, with the student and family who may need more attention than just the counselor can provide in that moment. So our general led staff, in the way our student development and wellness supervisors in our department and teaching learning have been working very closely with Mrs. Swift's staff, hand in hand. So that, again, the regular ed staff and special education staff are working together so that our services can meet the needs of all kids. So those would be local services within Milford Public Schools. And then as Dr. Katia mentioned, we've also been in collaboration with DCF 211, our local partners with Bridges, of course, to make sure that we're still able to provide the services that we would typically provide to students and families, but in a digital platform, all while protecting, you know, HIPAA and student privacy and the privacy of our families. So we kind of developed a tiered system and a tiered approach to respond.
Ms. Swift, did you want to chime in?
Sure, thank you. I would just add that the entire school system has been focused on relationship during this time and making sure first and foremost that those connections are in place to check, to be sure that families are okay. That's been the message that's been coming out from Dr. Fedigan and Dr. Katia and all of us across every meeting that we've held, that the well-being of the families is first and foremost and academics and learning is secondary. And I can just say that the first work of all the special ed staff too was to just make sure, make contact with families, make sure that they were, they are well and let them know that we have office hours with all of our school psychologists, so, social workers, behaviorists. And whether or not they have those services, they are, they can avail, our staff will avail themselves to anyone in need. Just knowing that these are unprecedented times and, you know, we're just not aware of what every, what every family's facing.
The only other thing that I would add is we've really tried to think about even, you know, how our communication can be two-way. So while we're reaching out to families, we want to make sure that while the school door, the school buildings are closed, our, as Dr. Katia has mentioned before, our hearts are open and we know that we can have, now of course, my dog is barking. We have recorded even messages on the voicemail inboxes at the 14 sites so that if a student or family member contacts the school, they're prompted how to leave a message. And our school secretarial staff are regularly checking those messages. So even if someone doesn't proactively reach out by email and they call the school instead so that there's a voice to voice, there's even a protocol set up for that. So we've tried to, again, think about how to use technology. We've communicated to our staff how they can use their phones through Google technology without using a personal cell phone to reach out by voice to students or to family member because sometimes it's easier to connect that way than over, than typing, right, through text. So we've thought about local solutions, using technology, using the different staffing models at elementary, middle and high school, focusing first on relationships and then also engaging and being in regular partnership with our typical agencies that we're so lucky to partner with, inclusive of, you know, as we mentioned, DCF and Bridges, the local police department. We're very fortunate. And we even, beyond our school system support, have the willingness for school and home well checks. So if we were really worried and not being able to connect with the family, we have a plan for that as well if we needed to ensure a well check for a child. Even at our larger high schools, our largest schools and system, we've been really fortunate to be able to connect with 100% of our, of our kids. Staff, staff to student and family. So I think that's really a wonderful thing, first and foremost, just in knowing that everyone's safe and having a plan as we move forward in the weeks ahead to follow up as, and as a need should arise.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Ms. Wolf Boynton? Are you good? Okay. I wanted to go back to the quarterly report. I do have one other question for Mr. Rich Telly, please. Um, it's a mute you. Um, so you mentioned for the 3231 to 3238, Mr. Rich Telly, the special ed, the special ed accounts, and you mentioned that it's, you're making some assumptions and you're not really sure yet what compensatory services might come out of those accounts, right? So would you be encumbering those? Or, I mean, if, how would you handle services that might take place after the end of the fiscal year? In those lines?
Well, if we know about it before the end of the fiscal year, we'll encumber the money. If we don't know about it, then we'd have to use money in next year's budget.
All right. That answers it, thanks. Are there any other questions for Mr. Rich Telly on the quarterly report? Okay, I see none. So actually, I should have not keep you unmuted because now we have the dispersment report for Mr. Rich Telly.
Yes. In your package, I've provided you the, a listing of all of the dispersments for the district for the month of March, over $1,500, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Were there any questions on the dispersment report for Mr. Rich Telly? Okay, I see none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Petrowski? Can you make a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes. This is Ms. Petrowski. I move that we dated March 9, 2020, for the Milford Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Mr. Fowler, seconds.
Mr. Fowler, seconds. All in favor, we need a roll call. Ms. Griffin?
Adam DeYoung?
Okay, wait a minute, let me unmute. All right, go ahead.
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Rita Hennessy? Yes. Warren Palowski?
Yes.
Una Petrowski?
You're unmuted, Una.
Una Petrowski?
Una, can you hear us? Una? Una, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Your vote?
I can, yes.
Okay.
Betsy Ratner?
Betsy Ratner?
Cynthia Twist?
Yes.
Nicole Watson?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Okay, 10-0.
All right, so the motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to board comment. I'm going to leave you all unmuted. Is there any board comment this evening? Ms. Hennessy?
Um, I just want to just commend the food services for getting all those meals out to the families in need and the IT department for getting all the devices out. Because I know, being in the district, I was that, it was a, it was a big push. And so I know how hard they must have worked, so thank you.
Ms. Ratner?
I agree. I want to thank everyone, Dr. Katia, what a miracle work, all that staff, the IT, everybody, the parents, their creativity, their courage during this time, willing to make change and transform themselves in education and being able to trust and hope, which are really our strengths. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Twist?
Yeah, I wanted to also say a real big thank you to all of the staff in Milford Public Schools. I, I've been impressed with the fact that there is an acknowledgement of the fact that teachers and administrators and support staff all have families and children and they too are dealing with their own children, their own family issues and dynamics. And yet they've managed to, what appears to be seamlessly, provided programs and services for kids. That is no small feat and it's been done, I think, with a significant amount of grace and a significant amount of thought and a significant amount of care for the, for the children and their families. And I really commend all of you for that.
Thank you. Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. I want to echo what everyone has said. I think it's important to acknowledge that it can be very easy for us to take granted what this administration and staff has put together. I have spoken to multiple family members and friends outside of our district in Connecticut, but also outside of the state. And they are doing virtually nothing for their, their kids. And the, you know, unfortunately, those kids that are getting virtually nothing are, they're going to miss 20 weeks of school with basically their parents being their teachers. And from a parent's standpoint, it has been incredibly seamless. The fact that you went from Friday being in the building to Monday having activities for kids to do at home. And people forget in phase one, there was a whole host of activities available for kids to do. Even though there wasn't the distance learning plan in place yet, there were administration and staff put together countless number of activities for, for kids, but also for parents who were searching desperately to work from home and also try and educate their kids. It is an absolutely remarkable thing that has happened here in Milford. We should be standing and applauding at every turn that we can. And so, and so I do, I really do stand and applaud. And, you know, everybody mentions staff and they deserve a huge mention, but I think also Dr. Katia and Dr. Fedigan for leading the way. I think it needs to be said over and over again by as many people that can say it. What an incredible feat you have pulled off. And I know we're still in the midst of it, so we shouldn't celebrate just yet. But I, I think the work that you have done is far and away better than anything that I have heard of being done during this time. And this time of uncertainty, you have made it certain for parents. And, and that's no small, small task. So thank you to you all.
Thank you. Ms. Petrowski?
I guess I just want to say pretty much the same as everyone else. The administration has done a remarkable job, not just in making everything happen, but communicating it clearly and concisely all the way through. And because it's such an uncertain time through the world, really, it was very helpful to have that one thing that had some level of certainty. And I think all of our families appreciated all of the work and the communications that you have all put into it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment? All right, before we go, I just want to thank you all, board members, for bearing with this first time. I think we'll be doing it again, so this is a dry run. And other than that, I will entertain a, if I can get Ms. Petrowski unmuted, a motion to adjourn.
This is Ms. Petrowski. I motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Fowler, seconds.
Mr. Fowler, seconds. If there are no, we'll dispense with the roll call. If there are no objections, the meeting will be adjourned at 8:14. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. Be safe.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, nice seeing you all.
Bye.
Yes, it was nice seeing you all. Okay.